All right. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter.
Lord, you came that the world might know the peace that you have experienced with the Father eternally. Yet, you taught us that in this life, there will be wars and rumors of wars. Nations will rise against nations as violence works itself out in the world. However, through you, the world may be saved. Oh, Lord, send your Spirit into the hearts of all men, that the world might know peace through your abundant mercy. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. This is probably our longest meeting of the year, so we'll call it. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Brussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have any public comment cards? See any? I'll ask you to put your cellphones on vibrate, and we'll move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of March 15, 2022, which will publish on April 8, 2022.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any discussion on our minutes of March 15? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3A.
Public hearing for ordinance 2022-04, enlarging the boundaries of the city of New Iberia, Louisiana, and amending the charter of the city of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and I'm not sure who had the second.
Between us, it don't matter.
Okay. Okay. Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, is there any public comment on this item? Yes, sir. Come on up. State your name and give us your comment.
My name is Richard Phillips. I live at 134 Pollard Avenue. Yeah. My question is, why exactly are we going to enlarge the boundaries of the city of New Iberia? And now, that's just a public comment. Are you allowed to answer that question?
I don't know. Do we go back? We don't really go back and forth on public comment. No one's ever asked me a question.
It's not in the beginning where you don't go back and forth.
Let me ask my attorney. Jeff, do we go back and forth on public comment when it's an item?
I think we can. I mean, the purpose of this is to hear from the public, so that's required.
Okay.
But you don't have to answer them if you don't want to.
Yeah.
But if you want to, you can.
I'd be glad to answer that. Why would you not want to grow?
I asked you why you would.
Well, I'm getting ready to tell you. No. Just hang on, dude. I'm gonna tell you why we're gonna grow. And my first response, I'm gonna say it the way I wanna say it. Why wouldn't you want to? I want a presence on the highway. I want people who ride down 90 to know that it's New Iberia right there. I want the jobs. I want the sales tax. I want to grow and develop. There are many new developers that come that want to be in the city, but they don't always want to be where we what we have left for growth. Many, many. You go on Emerald Dog, our hotspots are taken. You go on Sinister Street, there's only so many. I plan on annexing further on Sinister Street if I have my way. Why would I not want to annex the gateway of my community where there's brings in jobs and taxes and lets me get future development?
Can I answer the question?
You can go back and forth for a little while, anyway.
If you expand the land, you have to spread the services that seem to be taxed already over more land. The police services, the fire department, the sewage, the water, everything that you said, which is a perfectly valid reason to expand, has a cost. The cost, does that outweigh the advantages? Have you measured and weighed the pluses and the minuses?
I could not pay you more to ask a question better than this. Thank you very much. It's in our TIF district. I have a TIF district which brings dollars in, okay, at a half a cent when you sell at these when taxes are collected at this area. Guess what? It's right there in that area. It's not a very large TIF district. The parish has a TIF district that brings in $250,000 a month. I have a TIF district that brings in $25,000 a month. It's a small, little area. The beauty of this and all the area that I'm trying to expand in is very close to that TIF district so that I can expand it when I can, and I can utilize the dollars from the TIF district because I'm collecting it and I need to use it for something. And that TIF in particular can only be spent in the TIF district. So I actually have the money to make the expansion to do that. So the benefit is, I already have the money, it's in the bank, it's not going into debt, and I get taxes and jobs out the deal, and I get a presence on the highway. So it's a win-win.
You just answered the question that I had, and you explained it much more than just this saying that we're going to have comments on. But you see, by doing that, you convinced me.
Okay.
You're very good at convincing me.
Thank you, sir.
I'll sit down now, and I won't ask anymore.
I appreciate it. You can ask another. This was fun.
For now.
For now. Is there any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close our public comment.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Thank you all very much. That was fun. Item 3B.
Public hearing for ordinance 2022-05, amending approved budget allocations for the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Thank you all. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Okay. We had a motion that was Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter and a second, I guess, by the Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas on this one. It was close, though. I think Councilman Lewis was in there, too, but I can't do 3B. Thank you all. Now, we go to 4A.
Ordinance 2022-05, amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city of New Iberia.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. 5A.
Resolution 22-44, accepting change order number four for the T-Bayou wastewater treatment plant equalization basin levy repairs project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts and documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Do we have any discussion on this item?
So this...
Yes, ma'am.
It looks like we're probably gonna net out like $134,000 over if this is the last change order.
Yeah, it should be the last change order. Our engineer's here. And I wanna come on up. Yeah, sure. Come on up. Yes, it should be our last change order. It was definitely needed. This is a levy around the Cotton Street Plant that we own on half with the parish. It definitely needed some repairs. It will definitely need some maintenance to stay at the level we've gotten it to, but this was required.
It can be very important that we maintain it. It is the final change order. The next item is to accept the project as substantially complete. My name is Bo Desemo. Doming Zabo and Associates, by the way. Yeah, we were kinda lucky. We were able to do more of the project than we thought we would because it came in under budget originally, so we were able to finish the project. Came out really nice. We have a small punch list on the project, some minor erosion at the surface, which we're gonna take care of. Contractor has a year warranty and all that stuff, so, you know, as long as it's maintained, it ought to last us for a long time.
And we did take the, we had kind of a, because we were underbid at first, we had, you know, an opportunity to do more because it really needed it.
Right. So who's gonna maintain it once their, the contract's up? Is that us or the parish? I mean, share it? I mean, how do we make sure we're not in a situation?
I think that what's gonna happen is, I'm not pointing the fingers at who did it in the past or whatever. Going forward, we own half of that plant, so we are gonna have to stay on top of that and make sure, you know, Vince is our director now. Vince has 18 and a half months left. Tells me all the time, but he and the future director will have to keep a schedule and really kinda maintain that and do some inspections just to make sure that it doesn't happen again, you know?
Once we get grass growing, it's really just gonna be cutting it and making sure the trees don't grow up. And, because that's really what killed us. We had chicken trees and stuff and the roots, and that's the last thing you want in a levy, you know? Anytime you talk to someone with the Corps or anyone, the first thing I can tell you, no trees on a levy, you know? And that was, that and some other things, but, you know, it came out really nice, you know? Job, it was a good job. Contractor did well.
Okay, so the parish, so we're gonna take ownership of the maintenance versus the parish?
Well, we're gonna do it on half. No, we own the plant on half, so we're gonna keep, we're gonna make sure we keep track, and then we're gonna talk to our partners and make sure that between the two of us, we do it.
Okay.
So let's just say we need to be more diligent with our partners.
Okay. And Vince is gonna own it.
Yeah, he will.
Yeah. Okay. So the $150,000, we only owe $75,000 of that?
Yes. It's, wait, this is, no, this is our money.
This is our half?
Our half, yes.
It's $150,000?
This is our half, yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, so the 422 was not the total cost of the project, right? That was city's half, correct?
Uh, no. Um, this is total.
It was total? I was asking, Fred, I didn't remember what it was.
4.2 is the total project cost.
Yeah.
I apologize. I wasn't on this project the whole time. One of our engineers retired, so I'm kinda, kinda feeling in for him, but this is, this contract is total project cost.
So you're right, DeeDee.
And the $150,000, we'd be half.
Okay. All right. So that's less money that...
Yeah, it's less money I come up with.
Yeah. So I was talking to Bo before the meeting, and he said we actually got a better deal out of, because we were able to get, what, three quarters of the levy or maybe more now instead of, we originally bid for half of it.
Doing half of it.
Okay.
Pretty much did the whole thing.
The whole thing?
Yep.
That's great.
That was why we chipped in more money, because I do remember we had an opportunity, and we said, well, what good is half a levy? I mean, you know?
Worked out well.
Okay.
Cool. Any further discussion?
Good.
And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
No problem. I have the next two also.
I know.
You get to get out of here early.
5B.
Resolution 22-45, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute for and on behalf of the city of New Iberia, Louisiana, an act of acceptance from Southern Constructors LLC contractor pertaining to the completion of the construction of T-Bayou wastewater treatment plant equalization basin levy repairs project.
Do we have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing, it's the same item.
Related to the project we just talked about.
It is. Hearing none, please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. And 5C, Madam Clerk?
Resolution 22-46, approving contract for professional services with Doming Zabo and Associates for engineering services necessary to complete the American Rescue Plan Water Sector Program application and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. I got that one. Is there any discussion?
So, just, go ahead, let her.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just gonna make a comment that, you know, with the American Rescue Act plan and all the sewer things, there's things that people don't see, feel, and touch in our community as well that are extremely needed and important. And, you know, there's a lot gonna go into this, and, you know, we gotta go to the engineering firm, and hopefully that's, these things are gonna make a difference in our, you know, services to our people.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So which bucket of money is this one coming out of? I mean, it's 230...
This is gonna come out of our, it's an ARPA project.
Right.
And we're, the match is coming from the million dollars that we put up. You remember, we didn't get it last time with the state. We're trying again. I've had a couple meetings there. We have some assurances that we will get it. So it'll come out of that pot. And let's just say, worst case, we didn't get it, okay? Because Vince and I had this discussion that what happens if the next time I still only have a million dollars, the project is much more than a million dollars. It's still needed. In other words, we'll have the engineering. We might have to switch if we wouldn't get that money. I kinda think we will, but if we didn't, we might have to go off the capital outlay. We might have to look at other funds. We might have to, you know, if we really would not get anything else, we might have to, at some point, look at SRF loan, you know? There's other avenues. What we don't lose is the engineer. Engineering is engineering. What we need to do will not change. So this is an opportunity, and the more we flesh the plans out, the better chance we have to get the state money. We lost the money last time by just a very few points, like three points.
Right.
And then they admitted after that we had plans that they overlooked. Well, had I had the plans, we'd have got five points and we'd have gotten the money. So I said, okay, well, you know, is there margins for error? Is there something, you know, is there a penalty box? You know, can you give me some money some kinda way? And they were like, well, we out of money. They said, but get in line for the next one and resubmit. So not only are we resubmitting that we already had some plans, we will have much more and be really prepared to, you know, capitalize on that and get that money. So, but if we don't, I don't want anybody to think that this is not like a, we're spending a lot of engineering dollars, but it's something we need because it's issues we have to address. So even if we don't get the grant, the plans are going to waste. You know, we will find a way to implement this project, because you can make the list, and as since Vince's time is growing short, we have been doing that of looking at the prioritizing the projects now. Like, we know we need some work, some work in the headworks. That can wait a little while. I'm not sure we have all the money to do that, but we have made a pretty good list of what we need to do. And while Vince is here with the knowledge he has of the many years he's been here with our engineering firm that's always handled it, we're kinda preparing to keep moving because the sewer's not gonna stop when our director leaves.
No, absolutely. I was just trying to figure out, because I knew we hadn't gotten the match, so.
I know. You're like, what you doing?
So where's, yeah, I was just trying to figure where's the money coming from?
That's far.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So let's say we do get the money. In June, we find out the decision, correct? Or no?
Yes, we're supposed to. I mean, I can't control the state, but I do know June or July.
That's what they're telling you.
Kind of the next, something like that, yes.
So how long after the decision's made can we break ground?
Oof.
Like, since all the plans are already there.
They won't be finished. They'll just be to a level to help us get it. They're not gonna be finished by that time.
We just got our letter from some other municipalities who received their money this week, and you have to submit plans from the time you get your letter authorizing you to incur costs within six months. And then it's back on them. They have to approve the plans, which is probably...
It'll be a while, Brooke.
It's probably gonna take a while because, you know, it all goes to the same place, and everyone's gonna turn in everything at the same time.
I'll give you a great example, a much less complex project. To re-roof the two gyms, we got the money over a year ago, okay? Our contractor, finally, we have a contract, okay? We're still waiting. It's getting close. But it took over a year from the time we had the money and said, okay, developed the plans, and tried to bid the project. We were held up for months and months for review, months and months for, just to get the money. So it's well over a year. So I can tell you, with the workload, with the American Rescue money, with state capital outlay, with everything coming, every time you go to do a project with getting money from the state, it all runs through Facility Plan. It all runs through the same people. So they're bogged down by millions and millions and millions of dollars with the same number of borrowers. Some of them still aren't working full-time from COVID, so it's, we had their mercy. There's nothing you can do to speed it up. There's nothing, you know, you want the money, you play the game.
Gotcha.
So it'll be a while.
Okay, great.
I know. I know. It's not what you wanted to hear, but, you know.
Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Governments become a lesson in patience, and I don't have any, so it's a hard lesson. I know. Madam Clerk, 5D.
Resolution 22-47, requesting financial assistance from the state of Louisiana under fiscal year 2021-2022, local government assistance program.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any discussion?
So this money could be used for sewer, drainage, that kinda thing, right? More infrastructure-type projects, if we were able to get the grant?
Uh... That's the L-GAP money, right? Yeah. It could, but we have traditionally used it for sewer. No, no, wait. This is L-GAP. Give me a second. Oh, that's the 50. I know what this is. I'm sorry. That's the $50,000 that we're asking for L-GAP that we buy equipment with. What we've traditionally done is buy trucks for departments or trailers or that kinda thing. That's the one I'm using for the Pepperplex, I believe. Yeah, I gotta get a lawnmower and a truck as soon as I can, but it's 50,000. I was mixing that up with something else. So basically, we've always used that for equipment. We were told when I got here that it can only buy equipment for two departments, but that really wasn't true. So it always bought Public Works equipment. It never bought anybody anything else, because they told me when I got here, that's what it's for. Well, I got with Richard Minville, and he goes, no, you can do whatever. I mean, we bought a truck for the parks. Was that last year? Year before? We bought Jimmy One, you know, so we've been spreading it around through all the various departments.
Okay.
So we've spent it in Vince's department, in Public Works, in the parks, in compliance and inspection. So this time, I thought, you know, we do have a need, so I would try to use it for the Pepperplex, because we have a lot of equipment to buy. So it gets spread around. But you can almost use it for anything. I haven't enjoyed using it for trucks and equipment because at the amount of employees, with 250 employees and the amount of departments we have, we never, ever seem to have enough. There's always some truck going out. There's always something that, we were placing an aged fleet, so I never catch up. In five years, we still have old trucks on the road because I get complaints, and we still have trucks on the road that really, one, don't look good, and number two, are kinda on their last leg. I'm amazed at how many, when I got here, would just patch together. So I was trying to improve our image. That's why it was easy to use it for, you know, trucks.
Okay, so my next question would be, we don't have money in our $3 million budget to buy equipment for the Pepperplex?
Well, that's phase one of the Pepperplex, and I don't have enough. That's really construction dollars and, you know, overhead. When I look at what we need to do at the Pepperplex, we're not gonna be, I mean, I said that from the beginning. The $3 million was all we could afford to get to have the other side of the pie, which would be to go toward O&M. But, you know, we're not building a, something to compete, and I don't wanna compete. I wanna get up to a level that I'm not embarrassed, okay?
Right.
Bruceards Park is 36 million. I don't even know how much Youngsville is. We're spending $3 million in a park that they've invested $2 million, and then for the last 10 years, a lot of dads and volunteers and that kinda thing. So when you go out there and assess the work, I'm looking for every opportunity to make that $3 million go into the park as much as I can because, you know, we're gonna need more than that. So I thought this was an easy way to, you know, make my money go a little bit further.
Okay.
And then now that I have a director who really understands, which is why you get, when you're looking for a director, you get a good director. Now I have someone who's been on the job for a week, and, you know, his list of, not ask, of just, this is how you should approach it. This is what you really should do, is way bigger than our $3 million. So we sit there every day and prioritize and are trying to come up with, you know, what's the best plan to make sure that we grow this place? Because we know we're under the gun, and this is not a Pepperplex discussion, but I'll just say it, we're under the gun of, we gotta build a new crop. We gotta get kids from all over town, and we gotta get them involved because it's T-ball, okay? I had no intention, I'll just tell you, I had no intention of turfing the T-ball fields now. Now, when you get Richard over there, he's like, dude, that's the most important thing. If you're gonna build a new crop, you're not gonna get the 15-year-old kid or the 14-year-old kid who's playing at the $36 million ballpark to come back. You're gonna have to grow, you know, a new crop, basically. So he's like, you're not turfing five fields. You need to turf the T-ball fields as well. Well, then I'm like, okay, that's another $700,000. Now, we knew we would have some of that. We have a contingency. We know we can't do everything. But with that in mind, I was like, cool, I don't have to buy a truck if I use this money. So that was, you know, my thinking, just to tell you.
Okay.
So on a long answer, no, ma'am, $3 million is not enough.
Yeah, sure. I just wanna encourage those who've never taken a tour of the park to go out and take a tour, and you'll see how far $3 million is gonna go in that park. It's really not a lot.
Yeah, no, no. And I want them to see the before and after. We're already documenting, taking photographs, because we're gonna make, our $3 million is gonna make a difference, and it's gonna get us up to a level, just not be where we all really want it to be. But it's gonna make a difference, don't, you know?
Fulfill the dreams.
Hey, I'm just taking on the grant money. That's all.
No, there's nothing wrong with that. And I'm gonna need to go as far as I can. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote your machines. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, next item, 5D.
Resolution 22-48, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute for and on behalf of the city of New Iberia, any and all contracts and documents related to City Park and West End Community Center improvements, FPNC number 50-ML1-20-2, total project funding budget allocations revision number two of 12162021.
Do we have a motion?
Move.
Motion by, I think, the Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and a second, was that Mr. Bruce? Who was that? Oh, Councilman Marlon Lewis. Thank you.
I beat him again.
Yeah, boy, y'all write up each other. Any discussion?
So is this related to the roofs?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, finally, the roofs.
Okay.
We have a contractor. We got a decent bid. We ready to go, you know, which is good, because we need them. I can't get inside. We can't go to the next level, which we definitely wanna make. We've asked for capital outlay money to make improvements on the inside. We took a risk and made a few improvements on the inside with your money, hoping to roof holes, but I don't wanna do that through the whole building. But, yeah, that's what this is.
We, do we think, do we suspect we're gonna have a lot of supply chain issues related to this?
Uh, I don't think so. Our architect's here, but the metal, no, I don't think so. It's a pretty basic, you know?
That's good.
Most of that's made locally or at least fairly close. I don't think we'll have a problem. Come on up.
Yeah, we had a roofing contractor kinda do a pre-evaluation of the scope of the work to be done, and we had determined, and Freddie was involved in this decision, that most of the metal roofing on the building's actually in great shape. It just needs to be cleaned and recoded, which is what we did at the Public Works facility. We recoded the front of that roof system. So that's a really good option, because those roofs last 50, 60 years, and it's just half-life right now. So that was a decision that was made. But most of the flat roofs will be changed out, and some of the exterior, there's some deterioration on some of the overhangs and stuff that'll be taken care of. So, I mean, we really kinda, we're very conservative in everything we did on this project.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
New roof flashings everywhere. Normally, that's what gives out is your flashings. And then at West End, we get a new front entry.
Right.
That little one that's there. It's kinda neat, but it's really in bad shape.
Yeah.
So you remember, I showed you all a little sketch of what we were gonna do, and everybody approved it. So I think that's really an added feature that kinda shows that we spent some money. In other words, when you change a roof, all you get is a roof. The building looks exactly the same. So I was excited that we got to do, replace something that was aged, number one, and that, you know, do something new.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other discussion? Please vote your machines. Thank you all. 5F.
Resolution 22-49, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute for and on behalf of the city of New Iberia, any and all contracts and documents related to Volkswagen environmental mitigation, AI number 204948.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Do we have any discussion on this item?
So these are the charging stations? Where are they gonna be located?
By the Hampton. They want it to be right off of the highway, so we own that property that one day we're gonna incentivize and not build a civic center and get two big boxes there. When we're rating on the frontage road that we talk about all the time, and we'd really be able to incentivize that property. We're gonna use the Hampton's parking lot because we don't have any real development there, and it'll go right next to that, and it's two charging stations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Electric call?
Electric call.
Yes.
Yes. That's something that Cleco came with this money from this environmental mitigation and got involved with it at the beginning, and then kinda almost passed the buck over and said, you'll be dealing with these people. And so we get two charging stations, which I think is neat. And that was a good spot, because they really wanted them near the, And that was a good spot because they really wanted them near the, you know, near the highway.
The highway, right. Are we planning on getting more for, like, in the city?
If they give me the money and I can find a grant for it, I'd be glad to, you know?
You could probably use a couple at Bullany Plaza.
At some point, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how many electric cords we have in town, I know one person who has, I know one person who has one and they're moving, and I was like, "Aww, man."
I mean, I had one, but I left it in Atlanta because there was no charging stations here.
Right, right.
That's what I was gonna ask, my question was asked, we didn't have any charging stations, right?
No, no.
Well, we need them.
And I mean, you know, the federal government's making a push to do this around the country, so we thought, we put the first two in the highway, so they actually might get used, and then, but if ever I see a grant or see a way to do it, I got no problem.
I'm seeing more Teslas around the city, I mean, on Lafayette and stuff like that, so.
So Freddie, this is a Deidre question, what is the cost to the city on this charging station?
We don't really, it's a grant, we don't really have a cost.
Yeah, it's free.
Good.
And, you know, people pay, the people who put the charging stations make the money, okay? They have a little system, and you charge it, and they advertise them where you go on.
So it's pay, you have to pay if you have a car coming to the highway?
Oh, yeah, it's not, it's not free.
Well, it depends.
Well, these aren't free.
Okay, because most of the time, when you go to a charging station, it is free. You join a little club, and you have a little card, you swipe your card, and you go in, and there's no charge to it. So I don't know how your, these are gonna be set up, but the ones that I've used in the past have been free.
I thought these were set up and they were making money, was my understanding. Well, put it this way, when they started talking about swiping, when they started talking about swiping a card, I figured it was a charge, you know?
No, so it was, it was a little membership card that we used, and again, different state, but we had a membership card, and it was free.
Okay, well.
Never spent a penny on gas or electricity, so.
All right, yes, sir.
Oh, I thought you had to use it to, to put the diesel in the generator that charges the charging station.
No, as a matter of fact, I used to charge my car at home.
I knew something like that was coming, I could see his face.
I charged my car at home, and it never changed my electricity bill.
Oh, okay.
So there's a, I'm a big proponent of them.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion?
I'm excited.
Yeah, then please vote your machines. See you in a Tesla.
No, no, I'll be in the Leaf. That's what I used to drive, a Leaf.
Five J.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty, declaring certain property as surplus and authorizing disposal of surplus items by auction.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Bruceard, do you have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, is there any discussion on our disposal items?
So they're going to auction and we get some money back, potentially?
We're very glad that they come and pick them up and take them, and we tell them, "Thank you," and if we get anything at all, we're gonna be thrilled, okay? Because if I got rid of it, you know it was junk, but they really are bad, it's, there's nothing that worthwhile on that list, I can tell you. But yeah, we have the chance of getting something.
Gotcha.
Probably just make up for Sandra's time, because it is a bear to put all this together and, you know, get it all straight to surplus. LMA comes and helps, and I'm glad they do, but it's a chore.
Okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines, so I can clean up my parking lot. Thank you. Five H.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-one, declaring certain property as surplus and authorizing its disposal.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas II. Is there any discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank you.
Ricky, you voting?
Can you vote? Sorry, but I just can't get good help.
I thought I was abstaining.
Yeah, not on this one. Five I.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-two, approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with Iberia Parish Government and the city of New Iberia for operation of small animal shelter.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
We're excited about that, huh?
Everybody got animal problems.
Man, that was just like, help with the dog. Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and Councilman Marlon Lewis, do we have any discussion on this item?
Yeah, so, if I can get the floor.
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
We're paying more.
So we want more.
So we want more, so what's our guarantee that our service is gonna get better?
I actually went to a meeting, and I'm very encouraged, the Assistant Chief and I went to a meeting at Parish Government with the lady and her employees and members of the staff of the Parish President, and we had about an hour and a half meeting, and it was a really good meeting, okay? Very positive. I heard of their goals, what they're trying to do, we definitely need some community education, we definitely have a very big issue with abused dogs, with dogs that are just tied up to a fence with a phone card and all kind of craziness. We had a big discussion about how they were handling that, we had a big discussion about community involvement and about community education, we had a discussion, what brought us to the meeting is not the way the meeting ended, but, you know, then all start, you know, you just gotta roll with it. They wanted to know if my police officers could stay when they got a dog that was loose. Well, we really can't, we're still doing a hundred and fifty calls for services a day, they're running all over, you can't wait, I mean, I can't have an officer waiting for a half hour holding a dog, okay? But we came up with kind of a plan, and who contacted, and exchanged numbers, and got a little better plan than we have had prior. We had an incident last weekend, it was on a Saturday, my phone started blowing up, there were two pit bulls on Main Street, kind of causing some commotion, you know, we handled that, it went okay, but, you know, from that incident, we used it as an example, how it could be a faster response, how we could get to it, we talked about the dogs at large, which are everywhere, because I'm just like, y'all, I was starting to name the spots. "Oh, yeah, where the store used to be on Mississippi Street, oh, yeah, the corner of Field in Hocken, there's two brown dogs," all the thing, you know? And I just started naming because, I mean, I love my town, I'm in it every day, riding around, naming, even what color they were. And so we are making a better effort of communicating that, of, we do turn them in, I don't think that they get turned in regular, or I think they get turned in, and then you think the dog's gone, and then you go about your business, and you go back two weeks later, the dog's still there.
Yeah.
So we talked about, you know, better responses, they appreciated the fact that we are gonna be paying more money, and that that allowed them to have two people, kind of talked about their schedule, they go in the morning and they feed, and then, you know, because they only make, they don't really make overtime. So kind of talked about, kind of their dilemma of how fast they get out and what they do, and it was a really, I mean, I left the meeting feeling like, you know, we're making progress, we're communicating at a better level, we decided to continue to do this, to have more communication, my captain of patrol got all their information, the Assistant Chief was, you know, really vital at the meeting, and he got there, they traded information, so I think we're on the road to having better service and on the road to working together. The big picture is, we got a lot of people in our community that don't treat their animals, you know, in any kind of respectful way. We have a big issue, she told me about how our dogs, it's sad, but our dogs get adopted out in other states. There are four states that they can't wait to get our dogs. Colorado's one of them, they have huge spay and noodle laws, there's no puppies up there because their laws are so strict, and they love to get dogs from the South. So the, what they're desperately trying to do is not be a kill shelter, I'm not saying they don't have to kill them sometime, but what they're trying to do is save as many as they can and take all of the dogs that are kind of marketable, if you will, and get them shipped up. But as fast as they fill up, they have fifty-six kennels, they told me, and that's all they have. Fifty-six kennels are almost always full. The minute they ship fifty dogs out, it doesn't take any time at all, and the shelter's full again. And one of the reasons is because many of our dogs are abused, and many people are not, you know, taking care of them, and they're just tied up and chained up with no food and water, and just, you know, they have issues. Or they're just let loose and they're running around our community, but I was amazed, so you mean you're shipping hundreds of dogs, you know, a month, or, you know, and they were like, "Yeah." And those other states can't wait to get them.
So how do we communicate that to the public?
I don't know, that's what we talked about, and I said, "I would like to put some, you know, I don't have a lot, I am hoping that off of maybe some adventure in the opera, I save ten grand on a project or something, you know? I would love to find a way, we'll pay our part, they'll pay their part, but I would love to find a way to communicate and educate the public on exactly how much those neglected dogs, if you want to look at it from a heartless point of view, how much they cost to us. If you want to look at it from a community point of view, you know, we can do better, and we should do better."
Right.
So I think the little meeting we had was the first step, this money helps because it lets them do what they're doing and gives them more staff and more ability to do things, but the other part of it's kind of on us to be a partner and to try to cooperate. And I told them that, I said, "You know, if I can get my councilman involved," I actually asked her to come in about a month to get on our agenda, and they were doing all kind of things that I didn't know about. They're patching people's fences to keep dogs in, they're feeding, sending people food, giving people food, giving people advice on, you know, this is what you should do with your animal. So I really was amazed at the good work they were doing, and I said, "But nobody knows that. All we know is that we got two brown dogs on the corner of Field in Hocken, you didn't come pick up," you know? I said, "So why don't you come to a meeting, tell us the good things that you have going on, and then ask us how we can help? You know, give us, let's come up with a plan together, and let's do it publicly so that we raise an awareness tonight. Come and do," so she's actually gonna get on the agenda and come do a presentation, and so I think we, you know, it's a start, we're building a bridge.
Okay.
Now, I was told that, well, it was a suggestion that we need to tighten up on animal laws in the city.
We have good animal laws in the city.
Like as far as neglect and having the animals tied up outside all day?
You know, they, we had an example on Facebook that blew up, and I told them that, I called the guy, told them what I thought of him, because it was, the dog wasn't even in town, it wasn't even our dog, it wasn't even Iberia Parish. And so we have some instances where people blow things out of proportion, but we have good animal law. Now, do I tell you that my police officers, if there is crime in our community and other things are pressing, are they going to a hot call, or are they going to a dog call? We do prioritize our calls. Do we think the dog call is important? But after we talked about it, you know, they have to document, because my cops can go and respond to a call and write a ticket, and it can be an abuse ticket or whatever, but if it's not documented, okay, it doesn't do any good. It's gonna go to city court, they're gonna have nothing to work with, it's gonna get thrown out. So we had some discussions about the documentation on their end, one thing that we're gonna address is the animals at large. We have people that are repeat offenders that, you know, every week, their dog gets out. But it wasn't really documented, or we didn't have it. They said, "Oh, well, we have that." So well, then give it to us so my officers can stroke a ticket, because you can't expect a police officer to show up, one to remember, okay, because our town's a big town, but if he shows up once and the dog's out, and the lady says, "Oh, yeah, you know, the dog, he gets out every once in a while," he's not gonna stroke a ticket, he's gonna say, "Okay, put your dog up." But he doesn't know, and it might not be the same officer on the same shift, so he doesn't know that that's happened four or five times. So one of the things that came out of it is they're gonna share that information with us, and we're gonna start a little database, so if your dog's been out ten times, they're gonna stroke you a ticket. But always remember that officers have discretion, you know? Everybody wants our police to solve every problem. It's make a new art, and it's make a tougher art, and it's make the, we gotta book artists as this damn thing, that's not the problem. But sometimes an officer has discretion, if he doesn't think that it's worthy of a ticket, he's not gonna give a ticket, and he shouldn't. That's why we have them. So I think they're working on that, but I don't think that that's as big a deal as, you know, some people, you know, seem to be making it. Yes?
So another question.
Were you finished?
I was also gonna mention too.
I didn't think you were.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know, Erica is the new manager, I don't know if y'all knew that, I met with her before, and she's working on getting a spay noodle program for cats, so she captures them in the cages and gets them fixed, and I'm sure she's gonna talk about this when she comes.
She's coming to tell us all of that.
And once they're altered, she releases them where they came from. It would be really nice to do that for dogs, too, I know her plate is so full, but to get an affordable program like Spay Nation, but Spay Nation's in Scott, so that's far for people over here who are low income and can't necessarily afford to get their animals fixed.
Right.
If they get it at one time, they could potentially start reproducing, you know, and that starts a whole snowball effect right there.
Yeah, I think you're ahead of the game, that's what she's coming to tell us.
Okay. I'm just hoping that she can do that for the dogs, too, and I know she is working on the one for the cats.
She is, and I think she's doing a good job, I mean, I really think we have somebody there that's passionate and that, you know?
Oh, yeah, she's putting a lot of work in, for sure.
I'm telling you, I see that.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
So is everything complaint-driven? I mean, they're gonna do any proactive, looking for all these dogs that are just running around with no collars on them? Because, I mean, they're out throughout the day and stuff, I mean, are they proactively riding around checking for them, or is this?
I think they're swamped.
We gotta call it in.
I think we gotta call them in. I think at least until they can get it under control, they're swamped. I'm not saying they're not, I'm not gonna speak for them, I think they are, but, I mean, you find five dogs, it might take them all day to catch them. So I feel like, because the guy rides around a lot, we have so many dogs, what we're gonna have to do is take an active part, I think that's part of the education in it, of take an active part and turn them in, and, but just because you say, "I saw a dog here," and they go to find it, you know, they might not, it could be under a house, it could be wherever, but I think they're trying to be proactive, but I also think they're kind of swamped.
Okay.
It's a big, it's a big issue.
I know, I get calls about it all the time.
Well, we all do, and my phone, as much as your phone rings, you know, my phone rings even more, I mean, it's constant. So I think we're on, I wouldn't be suggesting that we put up forty-one thousand dollars more and going down the road we're going if I didn't know we had an issue and I didn't know that we have to get creative to fix it, you know? Because it is an issue.
It is.
Yes, sir.
I just think that, that looking at the big picture, I think it's a lot more affordable to partner with the parish on the service of this entity than it is to be in business and ourselves with our own shelter. I always thought that, you know, there's some, there's some parts of government that continuity works, and when you partnership with your parish and in animal control, it's a prime example, and I think that that's a service that can be shared amongst the community and the city and be efficient at it.
Thank you.
Right, ma'am?
Yeah, for a change, because I'm really not a consolidation guy by anything.
I didn't say the C-word.
It's like you almost put words in my mouth.
I didn't say the C-word.
I do think in this instance, it pays the part. All right, you won that one. Yes, sir?
Yeah, we don't want the shelter. I just want to clarify what we're doing and what we're not doing. The, and I don't think it's necessary to amend the motion or anything, but this is[1539.82] The, and I don't think it's necessary to amend the motion or anything, but this is just a temporary deal. We're gonna pay for the first quarter, and then the mayor's gonna work on a more permanent agreement to come back to the council. So, this is just.
Same dollar amount and everything, but we just needed to do something to stop gapping to say, we, we gotta, we gotta get moving, we gotta fix this.
So, we're gonna pay for the first quarter and work on the permanent deal, more permanent, permanent deal.
Sorry, I have one last question.
Sure. No, well, you s-
I'll talk to her, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So, in other words, there might be a chance that we might not spend forty thousand dollars by the end of the year, if it doesn't go as planned?
Uh, you got a better plan?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I don't either, so I think we have to make it work.
We're not, we're not committing to that.
But we're not committing to further than this, yeah.
It's not a full commitment to forty thousand dollars.
No, it's not a full commitment, but I think that we're gonna head down the road and make some commitment, is what I'm getting at. What it ends up being, I'm not sure. If you got a better plan, I'd love to hear it, but I do think that you're right. For now, we're committed to do this, and then we're gonna work out, you know, the rest of the details.
I'm sorry, I did have one more question, if no one else has a question.
Anybody else have anything? All right, shoot.
So, what percentage of the dogs that are in there, the fifty-six, come from New Iberia versus other parts of the parish? And are they paying their fair share to help with this service? And, uh, 'cause if we're paying forty thousand and our percentage is, you know, low, and their percentage is high, they ought to be paying fifty thousand.
Well, the case is the opposite, so, uh, we're not gonna discuss that too much. No, we pay for, we are a compact city with a lot of people. We are paying our fair share for sure, because.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Hey, I analyze, we think a lot alike. I immediately said, give me the numbers of the other communities. Uh, I would not have agreed to this if we weren't paying our fair share. We are.
Okay, all right. I, I trust your judgment, I just wanted to understand that. It's a parish thing, so.
No, that's fine. And let's not ride around and count.
If you go around the parish, you're gonna, people don't really care about stray dogs in the parish, 'cause you're gonna see one stray dog here, one there, but they all come from the city.
Yeah, and the other municipalities do, but they're a lot smaller than us.
They're a lot smaller.
You know, the General and Laurville are so much smaller than us for a city.
But they do have them.
They do have them, and they have issues. But for the amount of people we have in the compact area that we are, it's, yeah, we're paying our fair share.
Okay, the numbers weren't in there, so I had to ask.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Then, please vote your machines. Thank you all. Five J.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-three, accepting a certificate of substantial completion for Bayutech Museum Phase Two, renovations, Doc Burris Wing, and George Roderick Park project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, second, uh, uh, Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Yeah, we have a few pictures of them. Paul, you wanna come up? We got, uh, punchless items, I guess, to talk about.
Just roll through them. So, uh, tonight, uh, we're coming before the council, but the contractor has reached, uh, substantial completion for the parking lot only, okay? The museum, uh, Phase Two is not ready for acceptance, um, but, um, this was a project that Ted Vitor, the landscape architect, designed out. Uh, it's just Phase Two of the George Roderick Park, and, uh, so, uh, Ted made a list of some items that are called punchless items, so it's Chandler Staples, who was the engineer on the project, and, uh, the contractors actually take care of this, this quite rapidly. So, um, about tomorrow, um, the, the law firm will be parking in the parking lot, um, and, uh, they're quite aware that they can do that. Sector drainage is working well. The soil has been placed, uh, around the property. It needs to be hydroseated, uh, and some landscaping done. So, they just need to work around the lawyers' schedule in order to do that. Ricky and I talked about a Cox cable that, uh, both feeds the law office and our office as well. And, uh, probably about five years ago, that cable was hit by, uh, by, uh, electrical, uh, strike, lightning strike. And so, the entire cable system was done over at our office. It's not buried right now, uh, but during the construction, um, the contractor found the cable and hit it and, and broke it, and so the lawyers were without service for, uh, a day or so. So, I have a meeting with Cox, uh, and I informed, uh, the law office that I have that meeting, and they're gonna attend it. So, we're kinda gonna figure out what's, what they're gonna do with that exposed cable. I'm sure at some point, they wanted their construction to be completed, so that Cox come in there and properly bury it, because they're responsible for their law. So, um, the, the parking lot seems to be working great. I'm sure the lawyers will be happy to get it, as well as a public parking area for events that are coming up in the very near future. So, uh, it's nice to get it out of the way, because we got another project coming right behind it, right on top, behind, between the city steps and the parking lot, uh, which, which has already been bid, and we'll be getting that project started very soon as well. So, do you all have any questions?
One quick.
Yes, sir. How many parking spots? I didn't get, I walked in and counted, just curious.
Uh, the law firm has thirteen, and then there's six or seven additional spots, so it's about twenty parking spots, and then there's.
The public can use a lot, spots, the deal we have is that after hours, you know, we call it the lawyer's spots, because they donated the building, and then part of the deal was they ended up with some parking. But before and after hours, the public will use that as well. Plus, we picked up all the rest of the, I mean, they paid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the property and then donated to the city. So, you know, we, we got a lot out of the deal, but when we talk about that, that will also, you know, nighttime events, after hours, weekend events, the, all of that parking will be available to the public.
Great.
And it has been heavily used in the past, uh, even when it was limestone, for all the major events, the Gumbo Cook-Off, the Sugar Cane Festival. Uh, so, uh, so it's gonna be a little bit safer now for the people to use.
Any further questions, Congress? And, uh, I'd ask you, please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Five K.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-four, acknowledging the special meeting held by the New Iberia City Council on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, for the purposes of redistricting and agreeing to move forward with the plan established therein.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item? Discussion? Then, uh, please ask you to vote your machines. And this is so we can send it to Mr. Cedric, and he can start. He has a ton of legal descriptions, he has a ton of steps. So, we just kinda wanted to send it to him and say, kinda to keep the ball moving, say, okay, you know, get on it, because we would like to wrap this up, you know, in a, in a timely fashion. Cool, thank you all very much. Item five, I.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-five, approving use of financial assistance from the state of Louisiana under Act one nineteen of the regular legislative session, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Who was the motion? I just heard a call. Councilwoman Brooke Morcott, and who was the second? Uh, Councilman Dustin Swier. I, I, no, man, I was getting freaked out. Is there any discussion on this item? Then, I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. All right, we out of the fives. Uh, six A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-six, levying milages on the twenty-twenty-two tax rule on all properties subject to taxation by the City of New Iberia, and to set for public hearing on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mayor Tim Ricky Goncalo and a second, uh, by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on this?
Nothing changed.
No, we are not moving our taxes. We are, you know, the rates will be the same. Any other discussion? That's really the big question, so.
Yes.
All right, then, please, please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, six B.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-seven, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with ClearGov for budgeting software on behalf of the City of New Iberia, and to set for public hearing on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman, uh, Deidre, DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this? An explanation? Yes, go ahead.
No, go ahead with the explanation, then I'll ask my question.
Okay. This is some budget software that we've been researching. The way we do our budgets, it takes a lot of time of back and forth and a lot of paper, and then we have to set meetings up, because we're pretty antiquated in the way we've been working them. This system works in conjunction with Munis, which is our big accounting system, so they, they can talk to each other and information can get, you know, shared and uploaded. So, we needed a new system that Kevin and I can review a budget, put it together, get it to our department heads, get them to get all the information in. Uh, we had a department head meeting to make sure that everybody kinda bought in, because it is something new that they will have to learn. But after looking at systems, it seemed like a good one. We talked to some other communities in Louisiana that have it, and we just think it's gonna make our budget process a lot smoother, because we can constantly be getting information back and forth instead of waiting for meetings. I mean, the way we did our budgets in the past was to take our printout from Munis and sit there and work each one, and then come back to me and keep going back and forth. So, this system, we seem to start our budgets earlier every year and always end up almost late every year. Not really, we always one meeting ahead. We adopt them in October, and we have traditionally adopted them since I've been here, the first meeting in October instead of the second. Many times, I've seen in the past, people had to do extensions and all kinda stuff, but I would like to have them adopted even sooner. Well, you can't do that if you don't have an efficient way to do it. So, Kevin, you know, was in charge of that. He researched, and so, this was the program he liked. And so, we would enter into an agreement. We have ninety days. I think we can get out of it. We're doing it for a year, if I remember. So, we can, you know, if it, if it wouldn't work for some reason, you know, we can do something different.
Okay.
I hope that kind of explains what we're doing.
Yes. Um, a couple of questions. One is, do we do?
You know, if it's technical, I'm calling Kevin up here.
Yeah, no, no, actually, the question was for Kevin, so Kevin might wanna come up.
All right, Kevin, come on up. That's how you dodge a bullet.
You're good at that, Freddie.
I'm getting better.
So, Kevin, um, first question is, were you able to, um, export some of your data and import it into like a little pilot system, so you know that you can map the data and it's gonna work, before we sign on the dotted line?
What we have is, we have a conditional agreement, so we're starting, we have the ball rolling, but it's dependent upon the acceptance of the council. I, I have a meeting scheduled this Friday to, to speak with the customer service manager. They have guaranteed that the system will import and export, and if it does not, I tell them I cannot use the program, so.
So, they're gonna do like, um, a lot of times, they'll put it on a test data, test, uh, server, where you can take your data, put it in there, so you can see how it maps and make sure it looks good, and that you're good with it before you actually have to sign on the dotted line?
It's a cloud-based program, so it won't be going on a server.
Well, no, but even in the cloud, the cloud is, the server's in the background.
So, it'll be in the cloud, and, uh, we've had numerous questions. They do understand that it is contingent upon us being able to import-export. The two other cities I spoke with, they are exporting from Munis into the system, and they were having some issues with import. I brought it to the software's developer. They immediately started, um, making some phone calls, reaching out to those communities to solve it, and they are understanding that they will definitely demonstrate that it will import-export before we finally decide to sign it out at law.
Okay, I was just asking, 'cause a lot of times, they'll ask for a sample of your data, upload it in the system, so that you could see it and, and help with the mapping, so you know. Second thing is, is that, is there a customization layer where you can, do you have to use it exactly as is?
No, it's not. So, um, they have templates set up that you can follow it. It's kind of, um, like when you go in Excel, they have a wizard, sort of like that. So, you can customize it to however you want it to look and how you want it to be presented. There's a lot of flexibility. And it even gives the department head flexibility on how they see their, um, dashboard.
Okay. Um, and then, my next question was around customer service. I mean, these things always look great, and they always, you know, seem like they work really fine until all of a sudden, there's a problem. What's their customer service like? Do we know what hours of operation that are available? So, if we have a problem, we can call in to get support, and then, how do, you know, how do we prioritize that? I mean, are we gonna be prioritized to the top because we're a new customer? Those are things, from a software standpoint, you would wanna make sure that you are aware of.
Okay. Well, to answer the first part, I've import, I've sent them data for them to start doing the mapping. All the mapping is done by them. So, to answer your question on customer service, the two municipalities I spoke with, that was the number one thing they said. They said their customer service was unbeatable.
Excellent.
They said that was one thing they had to hand to them. They were prompt and responding. And, um, like I mentioned, when I met, told the sales rep that there was an issue that had found out, she immediately made the phone call, and they sent me back that same day saying that it's being looked in, too, and it would be proof to me that it would work to my satisfaction.
Okay. Um, the only thing I caution you on is that this always, I mean, they're always great during the sales process. It's three months down the line when you're actually doing the work. That's when you gotta worry about whether our customer service is actually gonna respond quickly enough.
Most things you buy, it's great, and then once the honeymoon's over with.
Exactly.
We actually have a hundred and eighty days satisfaction, and it's in the contract that if the council does not apport, uh, appropriate the funds, it can be canceled.
Okay. Thank you.
Should've got you to come to our meeting.
Well, I mean, you know, this was my life.
I know, I know. No, I know that.
When I was reading the contract, I was, there were some things in there.
Like I said, we got ninety days to make sure, and, and we will, because we're relying on, what I don't want is it's already April. So, it needs to work, or then I'm really be, we're really gonna be cramming, all of us, department heads and everybody, cramming to get our budget out the old way.
Exactly.
So, I, I am hoping that it's expedient and that we can figure it out quickly, that it's gonna do what it needs to do, because if not, you know, it's just gonna push, instead of helping and being more efficient, it's gonna push us behind.
Exactly.
So, in ninety days, we'll, maybe Kevin will make us a presentation, how it works, how it's gonna make us more efficient, I would assume, huh?
Sure, sure.
Uh, it's gonna be implemented, uh, while being made, and once we start, um, there's also features that, um, and beneficial to everybody, including the council. Yeah, I'm more than willing to give you all the information.
Yeah. Good.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the staff members gonna be in-service? They gonna have some training on how to use it?
Yes, yes, we talked about that.
Two training sessions in the contract.
Back up, yes. We have, we have, I had asked that right from the beginning, because it didn't do me any good to throw it at people and say, okay, hurry up and use it.
That was a question I asked them, because when I was reading, it said there would be one in-service for the department heads, one in-service for the administrator. I mentioned it to them that they had said it was unlimited. She came back and she says it is, but those are just dedicated meetings to simply for onboarding. There's additional requests. There's, um, you can call for assistance, and there's, um, web presentations, and they said they would provide us with as much training as we need.
Well, that's good.
I'm confident, though, that my department heads, um, will catch on to it.
The contract states two sessions, and then they would record it, and then you could go back and look at the recorded sessions. So, I don't know if unlimited means you can go back and look at the recorded sessions, but they're only gonna provide two live sessions.
No, ma'am. What I had mentioned is they were providing two live sessions, one for the administrator, and one for the department heads. I brought that to their attention. They said if we need additional training, it would not be a problem.
No, I'm just saying what's in the contract, so when we sign.
What we saw, it says two.
Yeah, the, we're signing saying two. They're saying they'll do more, but they're only obligated to do two, based on the contract we're gonna sign. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I know we've gone back to them with several requests, and, um, you know, they, they've been flexible to accommodate us, so I'm.
No, Kevin, please don't, don't hear me saying that, don't do this. I'm just saying that, from the letter of the contract.
They're only obligated for two.
They're only obligated for two, and after working with a lot of these software companies, whatever's in the contract, that's what they do. And so, there's a, never mind. We're good.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Is there gonna be somebody on the staff? Is it you who will be responsible for handling any problems that, you know, the rest of the, the department heads or whoever may have some problems, that they can come to right on site?
It's gonna have to be. It's the only way it's gonna work. I mean, you know, 'cause I anticipate that, just like with any of us or anybody else, not everybody's gonna be at the same level. So, you know, I basically already had that discussion with Kevin that, you know, I gotta get my budget out. So, if that means he's gotta help him do it or whatever, that's just how it's gotta be, you know?
But that's why the support hours are also important. So, if you need to make that phone call, they need to be there, so you can get your answers as quickly as possible.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we need to, it's a working thing, we need it.
Exactly, we'll be live.
So, what, like with Munis right now, I'm pretty much the go-to person to answer the questions, and if I can't answer it, then I, I will take it on to get it, um, corrected. So, I'm willing to do the same thing with ClearGov.
Cool.
Do I let him pick it? 'Cause it's his baby. That's how it works.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Good discussion. Uh, if you'd please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Six C.
Hang on, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. Take it down.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-seven, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agree, nope, I read that one. Or, uh, introduction of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-eight, amending approved budget allocation for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia, amendment number two, and to set for public hearing on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Please vote your machine. Thank you very much. And now, we go to six D.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-nine, authorizing the mayor to acquire the former Park Elementary School from Iberia Parish School Board on behalf of the City of New Iberia as part of the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled West End Park Improvements and Expansion, and to set for public hearing on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second one by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
And the price is gonna be?
One hundred thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, or one hundred and eleven dollars? Hundred and eleven. And this is a good thing. This is going to, just to tell the public, by acquiring this school, we have, uh, three departments that are gonna utilize it. We're gonna try to keep six classrooms live with some zone line units and a smaller, more economical way to run it, that West End Park will be able to use. As you know, Boys and Girls Club is moving into the teen side, so we're losing a kind of a classroom environment. We are hoping to make one of those classrooms a computer lab, might even try to partner with Boys and Girls Club and both be able to utilize it. In the next wing, if you will, 'cause the building's like laid out, there's a big H, in the next wing, the police officers will have two air-conditioned classrooms that they will utilize for training. They will also have the old auditorium and some of the other old classrooms to do the training that they now do at Bank, because Bank is, school board has other, you know, ideas for that empty school. So, we'll be able to keep that in-house. Um, Public Works will have one wing that will give them some kinda onsite, in-town storage. Public Works is not that far, but it is, it is basically just about out of town. So, this will give them a place to, uh, have some storage. The other wing will finally give us a home for, we keep buying more Christmas decorations for Hopkins Street, and they're really large. In addition, all of the, we got rid of the storage we had downtown at Bully Plaza because of the new visitor center. So, all of the rest of the Christmas decorations, uh, as well as other items, it can be stored, so the park will have a wing that'll be storage. The outside space will all go to the park. So, basically, we have now expanded West End Park by a good, a good bit, and put some community use there, and put some presents in the park that I think the more activity you have, the more coming and going of employees, the more people see city workers and police officers and park people coming and going. It's just more activity, so I think it's a good thing. Um, we could've maybe waited, and it was all kinda things people tried to do to, from donated to maybe eventually get the price down. We also could've lost it. So, while we had the opportunity, I personally, and I talked to quite a lot of you as well, I just thought that it was something we should grab, because how often do you get to increase the size of, the footprint of a park and have all of these, these uses?
Right.
Well, if no.
You think we can get some more speed bumps around this since now we're going to have kids going back and forth?
Well, since, since a very wise councilman put the first one in, and it seems to be working, we are, we are looking at, actually, we talked about, that would be the test case, okay? And it was you. And you put up some of your $100,000 to do that. Now, thank you. It's working. I want to put a second one there. We just need to watch where we space it so people can't go around it. And then we talked about making sure that one worked, and then we talked about, you had requested one in Bank Park.
Yes.
We talked about possibly in City Park. So I think that we will, I don't want to do it anywhere else except parks. That's where you have a concentration of kids. That's where, I don't want to put them on city streets. I do know that we open ourselves to some liability that someone, whether they did or not, and I bought the best con. They're called a speed table. They're very wide, and the angle is not as steep, and they don't tear people's cars up, but you bet somebody's going to say it did. So I want to limit the use of them, but I also see the safety factor. You and I, many times, we're in the park, and look at, all of us really, and looking at how fast people drive through. And I mean, it's a raceway. All the times we did food drives and test kits and COVID supplies, even on those days, I mean, you just see people ripping and running in both parks, just with no, how would they say, reckless abandonment. So we really need to, you know, this is for the kids, and that's the only reason I'm even willing to do this, because I do know it comes with some liability. But yes, I think we could.
It'd be awesome.
Yep. Any other discussion? Then I ask you to please vote your machines. Great, thank you. Six E.
Introduction of special ordinance number 2021-2022-07, amending the budget to allocate funding for professional services and to allocate actuator replacement project to ARPA. Amendment number six, and to set for public hearing on April 19th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Your move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swire. Is there any discussion?
Give us, give us a, I know we talked about it, but this is probably looking into the future, what we're going to need eventually.
Yeah, and this allows us to maximize our ARPA dollars. This will allow us to hire our professionals and to maximize the dollars so that they go as much as I can to each project. We just restructured a little bit to say this is an efficient way to get it done. And in the meantime, we actually need that actuator project as well.
Yeah, right.
And what I'm trying to do between this meeting and next meeting is be finished, finish with voting on ARPA projects, except as they come up in our regular scheme. In other words, then we can finally get going. We have, when, when do you think the next check's coming?
It's supposed to be coming in May, or shortly after.
Okay. So our second allotment of the rest of the balance of the money. So what I'm hoping to do is get all of our ducks in a row to where when we hit, we can actually look at spending and scheduling the whole $10 million. That way we're not having to wait. We've already agreed on all the projects, and people are getting excited about them, and we continue to talk about them. We also see, as we talk all the time, how slow things move sometimes of getting things to move. The plus of this is we have the money. It's our money. So that's a big step out of the way, that when you're waiting for capital outlay, sometime it takes you six months, you know, eight months just to access the funds. So although we have processes to go through, I think that these steps, getting us ready, is going to allow us to really move when it hits. Any other questions?
So, you want to say?
No, you go first.
Yeah.
I think we're talking about the same thing. We're just kind of, I don't know, but that's not what's in my packet.
Huh?
Is that what you were going to say?
No, you're talking about ordinance 2021-2022-07?
Yeah.
Amending the budget to reflect debt services on.
Yeah, that's what I see. But that's not what he, that's not what's on the agenda. That's why I was like confused what we were talking about.
Hang on. Yeah, I'm coming too. I'm looking for it.
Is it, is six, six E is not?
Oh, we got to mess up.
Yeah.
Oh, the title's wrong, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The title is wrong on that, but if you look at the numbers on the next pages, it is right.
We just got the wrong title. We got.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, the title is.
The numbers are right, but the title's wrong.
Yeah, everything else is accurate on it. Sorry about that, y'all.
No, no, no problem. It was just, I was a little confused.
Right.
No, we're not talking about actuators with the title. But we are talking about them in the proceeding papers.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. So everybody's clear that the numbers are right and what we're doing is right, just in the description, it was wrong.
The title is right on the agenda.
Yes.
Wrong on the draft of this ordinance.
Gotcha, gotcha. I just want everybody to be clear. So it's right on the agenda, the information's right, it just has the wrong title on one page.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I just, I mean, I was a little confused.
I looked at the numbers, and I didn't even look at that. I was flipping through, and I was worried about the numbers.
So the title is wrong on the ordinance cover sheet?
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's it.
It ran right in the paper. If you look at the notice that I sent, I got it right.
Last one, I wanted to make sure that we didn't, we didn't have something else that would be a snafu.
Wrong on the draft.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Any other discussion? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, property standards. This is why I said it would be eight o'clock. Well, it's seven now, almost, but.
You're just setting them for public hearing.
Let's make a deal where all of them get put for next month for three months.
Oh, no.
No, no.
No one showed up?
No, 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 no. But this is.
This is the set. All we're really doing tonight is set, but we end up talking about it. And we're just, we're supposed to, that's our job.
Yep.
Oh, before we move on this, before we move on this, I just got to tell y'all, I have a couple of grand left, I think, of budgeting from my promotional money. And I know I'm totally out of order, but I got to turn my head, just like many of you do. So that's why I'm bringing it up. I think I want to get another TV, put it in the back of the room.
Yep.
Okay? And hook it up so that we can look, and then we would stop constantly turning our head.
That's awesome.
So I have, I think, enough money to pull that off. So, and this is when I always say I want to do it, because every time we do property standards, we all doing this like a bunch of turkeys. So if that's okay with everybody, I'll be bringing it to y'all, but I want to do that, so. All right.
Do you have to come out the ceiling, or are you putting it on the back wall?
Right.
I think the back wall. I think the back wall.
You kind of clue him, it just comes down out of the ceiling.
I know, I know.
Right. What are we going to move, though? Those look like some pretty important documents on that wall over there.
They are, and so we'll just have to figure out how we, I don't want to get rid of them.
Move them over.
I mean, we just move them over.
Take the little one and move it in the corner and put it in that corner.
Yeah, it'll be big enough, just so we don't have to, you know, that might be, that might be the answer. Just so we can stop turning around.
Right. No, that's a good idea.
All right. Well, now we'll have some fun with property standards. Jimmy? Madam Clerk, yes, ma'am.
Resolution 2256, declaring that the buildings at address 295 Camellia Street in District 5 is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May 3rd, 2022.
Yeah, so this is my district, and this house has been a problem since I took over the district. It is out of control. And we reported it, but as you can see, they don't do anything, so.
That.
We really need to do the motion in a second before we have discussion.
Oh.
Just, you know, just being the parliamentarian that I am. No, I'm always the one, always the one messing up. So if you don't mind, do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Do we have a discussion?
Yes. So, yeah, so, funny because Brooke, a lot of people think this is Brooke's district, but it's actually my district. And so we've both had calls on this thing. It is out of control. I don't even know how the people are living in there. There was a guy going in and out of there. I don't know if he actually physically lives there, if he lives at the house next door. But they haven't cleaned it up, and it needs to be demolished. And that yard needs to be cleaned up.
Okay.
Does he live in there?
I don't know if he's actually living. He, I saw him go on the porch and sit there, but.
When I went, look at it, whenever we initially thought it was in my district, apparently it was his sister that I saw on the street, and she said her brother kind of goes in and out and lives there whenever he can. So I don't know how, because it, it looks like it's full of stuff inside, too.
Yeah.
Okay, we did a junk ordinance on this house for the trash that's on the outside.
Yep.
I got a call from Nicole today. I went and took pictures. It goes to court tomorrow.
Good.
So I, I can't say one way or the other which way it's going to go, but.
So let me ask a question. This is because I don't know the answer. If, if the junk ordinance goes forward and they say, okay, you got 30 days to clean it up, whatever, how does that affect what we do tonight with the house? Because the house is a disaster.
The house is being set up for public hearing.
Right.
Yeah, it's two separate, two separate moves.
Right, so that's exactly right. That's why I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, I think you proceed with the house.
We can proceed.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
If you notice the picture, obviously, there's no electricity at the home. It's disconnected. You can see the power pole.
Correct.
So it's uninhabitable, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they said people living in and out of it, there's no services to the house, as far as I see, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's probably not the landowner living in it, right?
Correct.
No, I don't think so. No. I think it's just like a random squatter.
Make sure I see what I'm seeing.
Yeah, we are correct.
So if we approve a demolition, we're not approving cleaning the junk?
I'm hoping the junk's gone before it goes to demolition. We moved on the junk first, so hopefully the junk is gone, junk is gone and then the house.
Yeah.
Because I'd hate to see what that would cost for, on the demolition, to haul all that off.
That's what I was concerned.
You got, you could probably two dumpster loads outside.
Yeah.
Minimal, yeah.
I don't know how you were able to inspect it with all the stuff right there.
I know.
It's all over.
This is easy one.
Sprinting.
Yeah. I mean, literally, yeah. The, and the guy, this guy, he'll go and, you know, stand on the porch and go out there. He'll just be standing there looking at me like, you know, okay, do some of my body kind of thing. I'm like, don't worry, dude. The pen will do the work. But, yeah, it's a mess.
Okay. Any other discussion? And I, yes, sir. Wait, I heard somebody.
Public hearing date is going to be May 3rd.
Okay.
Is that house adjudicated?
Uh, I don't think so. No.
So there is an owner attached to it?
Yes. Yes.
The assessed owner is Amal Adele Maloney. The son.
Okay.
I think it's the son, right?
The daughter.
Is it the daughter?
Is that the daughter?
Well.
Okay, all right.
Let's be respectful.
Yes.
Do your jobs.
That's the one that was served in St. Martin Parish?
Okay.
Oh, okay, the daughter.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, clearly she hasn't been over at her property in a long time, because this is appalling.
Did you get a motion? No, we had a motion and a second already.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we finished discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Can we have a report?
Okay. Seven B.
Resolution 22-57, declaring that the buildings at address 1524 Creswell Street, District 3, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May 3rd, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'm going to give this one to Councilman David Broussard, and a second to Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo.
Here's a picture of it.
It's coming.
It's coming. One move at a time.
It's open.
Jimmy?
The, the back end is falling down. So when I come for the public hearing, I'll have pictures of the back.
It's not that bad looking. If the, if somebody wants to come and save it, come on.
Oh, but the back end.
You can see the back from right here.
Yeah.
We giving them warning right now that the door's out, window's out, it's been vacant for about a year and a half, two years. If y'all want to come and save it, y'all better come to the next meeting on May, whatever you have. That's what I'm putting down for. So anybody wants to save all these houses, come and talk. Come do it. But enough time's enough time after a while. It goes fast.
Now, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
For the, for the record, though, because I was thinking the same thing. All of these houses we tearing down, for good reason, most of them. And he said, does somebody want to save it? All of them, for good reason. So does the public, the public don't have a chance to come and save these houses, right? Only the people who.
Yeah, yeah, the owner of the house has to.
Owner of the house.
Somebody owns these houses. Correct, correct.
I'm guessing he's calling the owners forward.
Yeah, yeah, you just need the owners to come.
Right. But before the owners, so it's, this is not adjudicated either, right?
No. No.
It's an attached, is it attached to the owner?
Yeah, the assessed owner is Raymond Miller, and he bought the property with Dinella Antoine Miller. And I think we have a good address for her. I'm not sure about him. Sometimes if we think that they acquired it a long time ago and they might be dead, we have to appoint an attorney. So I have the notes. For districts, all of these are districts 2, 3, and 5, I think. And I got ownership information I can give you all for those three districts. But, yeah. I don't know if there's any current owner in town. We think probably so. But they look to be local people.
But I think this meeting, I think this meeting, we're trying to tell the public, you recognize that house?
Yeah.
You see that house? We giving you a warning now to be here within the next time we giving you? And if you don't show up, we're going to consider different measures after that. So be being polite on this first meeting.
Right. And if you know Raymond Miller or Dinella Antoine Miller, tell them.
Let them know through this camera right here that you better come save it, or it's going to be gone. The people have been tired for two years watching for that in a nice neighborhood over there.
So when it's not adjudicated, that mean they are paying their taxes?
Mm-hmm.
And possibly keeping the grass cut, but nothing else?
Well, not that one.
No, we cutting the grass.
Now, we cut, we're probably cutting the grass.
We cutting the grass.
When they get to this point.
When I come at the next meeting, I'll have whether it's adjudicated or not.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see that this one is.
Okay.
Next meeting, next, May, whatever you have.
May 3rd. Yeah, they all May 3rd. Any other discussion? No? And please vote your machines.
Yeah, this one adjudicated 2019.
Okay.
That one right there.
Next one, all right.
One back to back.
Resolution 22-58, declaring that the building at 321 East Dale, District 3, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May 3rd, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swire. Okay. Mr. Broussard, what's in your district?
Again, we talking, does anybody want to save it? It's not maybe that bad, but if you want to save it, come on and talk. We giving you this meeting to advise you to come talk to us, who's the families, what can be done. Because after a while, enough's enough.
Well, this is Dr. Adele's.
Thank you, David.
So there's, I thought maybe they would have fixed it after the other two houses were renovated. I mean, the other two houses look really nice, but
Really nice.
that thing is falling apart.
And so the, the two owners of the two houses that were repaired, Jimmy?
I did get a phone call from the owner of the blue house.
Yeah.
He repaired it. He offered to buy that house. But the price was unreasonable.
Right.
So he asked me to call him once it's set for public hearing. I will call him tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I have his number at the office, in the office.
And that's the question I'm asking.
He wants, he wants it gone. He want, he wants it gone.
He wants it gone.
Yeah.
Because I mean, he's not gonna renovate it.
Yeah.
He's just making the neighborhood look bad.
Yeah. And especially with the two on the side have been fixed.
Exactly.
Really nice.
Yes.
An empty lot on the other side.
And I was waiting for that one to get fixed.
The empty lot on the front is owned by, uh, the hackers.
Sure did a good job moving it.
Yeah, they took the old building out.
But again, we want to tell the public, we trying to save rooftops.
Now, there, there is a junk court date tomorrow for the back of the property where there's all kind of trash and stuff. That's the other one coming to court tomorrow.
Update, update us on that junk ordinance process again, so it's different from the tearing down of a house, right?
Yeah.
So.
I send a letter. They have fifteen days. When I get the letter back, if it's been longer than fifteen days, I go look. If they haven't done anything, we go to Freddie first. Then if it looks like it's not really junk, but it's clutter, then we send it to the prosecutor. Where public works, if public works can't go clean it.
And we actually.
Can't go clean it, right?
Well, we actually look at every picture, believe it or not, okay? And Jimmy and I look at the picture and I say, pick this up, pick that up, pick this up. Because there are things that you can't pick up. You're not gonna pick up a boat trail that's got a title. You're not gonna pick up a lawnmower because I don't know if it runs. You're not gonna pick up a pile of really nice cypress, okay? You know, so if it looks like it has any value at all, then I'm like, we're not picking that up. Because I'm not trying to do anything to anybody. I'm just trying to clean my town.
Too big.
Or if it's too big. Sometimes it's just something we can't handle.
The first picture.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But when it's junk that we can, we identify and actually circle on the picture and then public works knows what they can go pick up.
So they can go pick up?
Sometimes, yes. Some things they can.
Then if it doesn't work, that process doesn't work, we send it to the city prosecutor.
Yeah. But I actually look at every one before they go. Because what I don't want to do is send my people and they, you know, mistakenly throw something away that's good and then now we got somebody complaining. We haven't had it yet, knock on something.
So they're able to go on public and private property and pick up?
Yes. Through this process, through this process, because of the ordinance and the rules we have. Same thing, our most drastic thing in government is tearing somebody's house down, but we can do that through our ordinances and through the process that we follow.
And you can still do that with the people living in the house? You can do that?
We have never made anybody homeless that I know of, so we can do the junk.
What I'm saying, junk.
Oh, yes, definitely, definitely. And we, and we have many, many times. And, and this is.
I've been fighting junk over there on, uh, uh, Zer Street?
I went there today.
For years?
I went there. We sent a letter today to them.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Sixteen oh eight?
Yeah.
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 It's in the system.
I can't do anything about what's under the carport.
Yeah, that's the other thing. I can't go under the carport. Can't go on a porch, can't go under a carport. And, and sometimes they just pile everything on the porch and under the carport.
Yeah, exactly.
This is in the backyard what we talking about?
Uh, sixteen oh eight is under the carport and in the front.
But, uh, on Wallace Street?
Wallace? I didn't have anything on Wallace.
You know what I'm talking about? Next to the Broussards or Boudros?
The Boudros.
With the Boudros. We ain't do anything with that?
Uh, let's see, Wallace, Wallace. Well, I haven't been there in a while.
But that's, you know, that's.
They've been complaining, they complained about.
That's their own property. I mean, you.
Yeah, well, that's the ex-wife.
Yeah.
Uh, fleas.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that yard has been pretty much kept clean now.
Okay.
In the beginning, we had problems early, but she cleaned it up and everything's gone.
Oh, God. That's why I didn't hear anything in a while. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you blessings.
Mr. Broussard?
Yeah. This is the city attorney.
Mm-hmm.
We have some people that accused us of not giving them time to ever come fix their house. So we telling them right now in this house, we have enough, we have some time to come back and talk to us and tell us what you gonna do. So anybody in this town that recognizes their house right here, better come talk. Because I don't want to be accused ever of not giving somebody some time.
And we're gonna give him notice and I'm gonna tell his attorney and invite his attorney just like I did the last time.
State law, three and four times on the houses, too many.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
So on the junk ordinance, if, if the junk is under the carport, what kind of?
I can't do anything. It's, it's there. If it's on a porch or under a carport, I can't touch it. And I have many of them that, you know, people call and complain and we go look and Jimmy spends the time and Hillary prints the pictures and we look at them and we, you know, but if, if it's under a carport, I can't, I can't do it.
Okay.
Just like if a car is over twenty-five years old, I can't do anything. I mean, you know, we have, we have rules. We got rules we gotta follow. Well, it's the rules.
But we can, if necessary, if we, we find it necessary, we can change the ordinance though, right?
I don't know if you can change that. I'm not sure. That was, uh, there was, that's a, that's a Jeff question.
I'd have to look at it.
There was, I was told from the beginning I could not go on porches or under carports, so I didn't, you know? But I'm not sure if that's a state law or if there's some other reason why we don't. There must be a reason why we don't do that.
I don't know. The, the.
Okay.
Yeah, the law may talk about the yard or something. I don't know.
And that's, and that's being because it's undercover, correct?
Yes, it's, it's under part of the house.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
It's almost like going in the house.
Correct.
That's the way, you know, whether, whether it's right or wrong, that's, you know, it's how it was when I was the pro tem. It's how, and maybe, look, I don't like government things that just exist because they existed before. So, you know.
I will check on that and the chickens.
Thank you.
Please. However, I just, it's out of control again, but I guess I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, some of these ordinances were written a long time ago. And if we actually are in a pro, in a, a place where we can actually amend them to make them better and, you know, easier for us, because some of these people, this is, you know, the same people with the problem over and over again. And so it's just, how, how can we amend it to make it better so that it actually serves the community better? That's all I'm asking.
Well, you have to amend some people to make them better.
I have a way to do that.
Because all I'm picturing is this older man, sixty-five, seventy years old, walking right outside his house and say, don't come up under my carport.
No, again.
I kind of try to picture everything from a common sense standpoint.
And I'm just not just talking about the junk ordinance. I'm just saying in general, they don't work for us anymore. Can we actually amend them because they don't work for us anymore?
We, our little group, our little gathering, get together, we, we do do that. We, we, you know, that is something that we work on.
Okay, well.
So it's not, uh.
Add the chicken one, the file to the list.
I veto that one. I like chickens. Anyway.
Okay, Freddie, you gonna come and live on Ann Street then? We got about a hundred over there.
Those chickens would be legal if they were two feet off the ground.
They're not though. Right?
Yeah, no.
So we gotta do something about them.
I wouldn't look at them.
We're gonna do something about them though, right?
Bring them to my house.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm causing trouble.
But thank, thank, make them legal. Don't think, do something.
No, because actually it's.
Make them legal.
So, but it's not just illegal. It's, it's a, it's a nuisance for the neighbors.
Make them legal.
Okay, Marlon, you come live on Ann with Freddie.
You can't beat, we got chickens over there.
I started this and I'm about to say we gotta get back on what we're on.
Right, so I'm a little confused now. It's not about chickens. Are we talking about chickens or are we talking about junk?
Junk.
Okay.
Actually, we're talking about dilapidated.
We supposed to talk about the house.
So you're bringing up, so you're bringing up the suggestion to go back in the ordinance and look at it to, to classify junk under someone's carport or.
Well, the first, first thing we're gonna do is let our city. It might be there for a reason. Let's just let our city attorney look at that and see if that's really there for a reason that you can't go into.
Right.
I was just.
And then there's nothing to amend.
I just wanted clarification. I didn't have, I didn't know. Then you went to chickens, then you went back.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
I was only asking the question as a general question about some of the ordinances that don't, don't work for us anymore. Because maybe for whatever reason, things have changed and do we have the ability to come in and amend those things and, and.
Or, or you take them out completely if they're not working.
Yes, yes.
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 So then, that was all, that was my question.
Yes.
Freddie went over there to the chickens.
I did, I did, okay. Long meeting. All right, where are we on this one? So we get back to work. Uh, we have a motion and a second.
Put it to me. You get the notice.
Okay, all right, well. Is there, was there any other discussion?
About the chickens, yeah.
Please vote your machines. Thank you. Thanks for pushing us along, Councilman Broussard. All right.
I got rid of my old car in my district.
Seven D.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifty-nine, declaring that the buildings at address four oh eight West Dale Street, District Two, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May third, twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a motion?
No, second.
Motion by, uh, Councilman Lewis and, uh, Mr. Councilman Broussard had the second on that one. Uh, okay. That's your district?
No, 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 that's Mr. Broussard's district.
Actually, it's your district. I thought it was mine. I turned it in. Yeah, but that's your district. I thought it was mine. So I turned it in, but it's actually yours.
Between Corrine and St. Jude.
Exactly. The cutoff is your area.
It's right down the line.
Jimmy, what you got?
It's right on the line. That's right.
It is, it is the line.
It is the line.
Between five and two.
Yep.
Yeah, right by the main office house.
Yeah, but this thing's gotta go.
Oh, yeah, definitely. That's why I was making the motion to get rid of it.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second and you say, you say it needs to go?
Yeah, oh, it needs to go.
Okay. Is there any other?
Doctor.
And I thought that was your district.
Is, is there any other discussion on this one?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I passed this house a lot, uh, over the last few years and I, I did try to add it to the list a long time ago, even though it wasn't my district.
Okay.
Because it's dangerous. Mainly that back door is wide open. You even see somebody, somebody has put a, a folding chair in there, so they in there doing something.
More likely drugs. Is that a school behind it? I saw buses on the other picture.
That's a parking lot. The bus parking lot behind.
That's the old Johnson Street School, where they park the buses.
But I saw the house for, like Ms. Ledbetter said, for years, but I never got a call on the house. Uh, assumed it was District Three because it's right on the line.
I, I get a call every now and then for grass.
Okay.
And it's, they've started dumping trash, so I just happened to be passing by and took a picture and said, please add this one because this is ridiculous. And people are going in and out of that from the back. They are.
Any further discussion? Uh, then please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven E.
Resolution twenty-two sixty, declaring that the building at address nine oh six Dootrow Alley, District Five, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on March third, twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. All right.
Said March third, I guess. That doesn't matter. She said March third.
There's two structures on the property.
Yes, May third. They all May third.
Yeah. And there's two structures on the property. Who, whose district is it?
This is mine. That's my district, yeah. So the, the, the house, the house, there's a house in front and this is in the back. And I get so many complaints because there's possums and all kinds of things coming out of there and going into other people's yards. It's a, it's an isolate. I don't even know how y'all gonna get back there.
It's off a wall.
Yes. Yeah. The house in front isn't in all that great of a condition either.
Right. They got some nice cypress on there though.
It's old.
Huh?
But it's a hot mess.
It's old.
And the lady that lives behind there, she calls me all the time because she's just sick of it.
So there are two pieces of property there.
Owned by the same person, Joe?
Yeah. There's a hundred by one oh five and then a piece in the back, fifty by one oh five. So are we talking about both of them? Are there structures on both pieces or do you know?
The structure's on the left as you're going down. I'd have to go look at the map, but I think they're on the same property.
They look like they are. Because the other house is in front.
That's off of Walton Street, right?
Yes.
Can you see it from off of Walton Street?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Off of Walton.
And then on the alley as well.
But by Dale.
Okay.
You can see the little, in the front, there's a greenhouse that's not too good a shape.
Yeah.
And on the side of the greenhouse, there's a, I wanna say a Cadillac or a Lincoln, but it's not bad enough to tag.
I think this is the old.
So, and then you, you're gonna see the alley going to the back.
Can you get to it, Jimmy?
Can I get to what? That?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can get to it.
Oh, yeah. Down the alley.
Can I get a clarification of what you said? What do you mean by it's not bad enough to tag on a car? What does that mean?
Okay, it doesn't have a license plate. It doesn't have an inspection, but it has not, no damage. Nope, it's not wrecked. It's not a.
But what if it's, it doesn't run?
We don't, we don't ju, we don't judge that.
I don't have.
We don't start them. We don't, we don't look at the interior and we don't start them.
I have a list of eight things and it's gotta be one of the eight.
Okay, so can we get the eight things?
He could be working on it.
Because, I mean, I'm sending, I send you cars all the time. Probably send you four, five today and I don't know what that means when it's.
I'll get you the list.
Because if it's sitting there and it look like it hasn't been moved in a long, long time and it's a whole lot of mess, I turn it in because that's a abandoned car in the front yard. That's ridiculous.
I said Lincoln, man. Could be a project.
Freddie, you gotta take it to your neighborhood then. I'll stay there.
We'll load the chickens.
Your wife is gonna run you.
Yeah, well.
He's got chickens and old cars in his yard.
I already do. Okay, any other discussion on this one?
It needs to be destroyed.
This, this will probably have to go through the attorney. I think this guy's deceased. I'm not sure.
All right. Well, uh, please vote your machines then. Thank you. Seven F.
Resolution twenty-two sixty-one, declaring that the buildings at address eight oh nine Edna Street in District Five is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May third, twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott.
Uh, this one, this one is coming back because we didn't have good service in the last back. So that's why it's here.
Okay. Yeah. This is, this is one we've talked about before.
Yes, yeah, yes.
And the neighbor.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're demolishing.
In your district, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna demolish it.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this one?
I just got a question. Jimmy, most of that, that old sign, most of that is asbestos on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. They make a new one that looks just like it. It's concrete, but if it's an old house, it's asbestos. Anybody else? Then, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven G.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-two, declaring that the buildings at address four sixteen Field Street, District Five, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May third, twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. This is another District Five.
Yep.
Okay, this is a trailer in the back of four fourteen.
Oh, okay.
And you see how the tree's already fallen and, and it really needs to go.
Is the same person owners in four fourteen or it's a different property? No, I think it's the same property.
Same owner.
Same owner.
So my question is.
The owner of the trailer and there's the owner of the property.
So my question is, the owner's just sitting back waiting for us to go clean up his property?
He doesn't own the trailer.
Okay, I thought you said he owned the trailer.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a scenario.
I know, I know now.
I had, I had a trailer in a trailer park and the trailer park owner demolished it. When the owner realized he demolished it, he sued the owner and had to pay five thousand dollars and, and over what he paid to demolish it. So, so.
My question is, is that that owner had to give permission to that owner to let that trailer get in that, that position on his property?
Yeah. Yeah.
So-
Same thing here.
This trailer is owned by a former owner of the property.
Yeah.
So when he acquired the property, the trailer was on it and now it becomes his, correct?
That's the way I see it.
That's the way I see it. So he's waiting for us to clean up his property?
Well, I mean, he is. But the trailer's a separately titled thing, so it doesn't travel with the property.
I get, I get it, okay.
So, you know, they, they sold the property, they forgot about the trailer. You know, they just didn't, didn't worry about it. So, we give notice to the landowner and the mobile homeowner. Because we have a separate assessment on the mobile home.
Okay. Question, so if the, if you cannot get, make contact with the owner of the mobile home, say they're deceased, there's nobody wants to mess with it, yada, yada, what do we do from there? What if we go tear it down and then all of a sudden it comes back on us? As far as liability reason and we get sued?
I think, I think we have a fairly recent current address for the landowner in Youngsville.
What, in Youngsville?
Freddie.
And then I think we have a fairly recent current address for the trailer owner in Lafayette. So I think we'll get good notice on that one.
Right.
Yeah, but I agree with Ricky, I, I would think when you take possession of a piece of property and you paying taxes on that piece of property, that becomes, I mean, also see what Jimmy's coming with the trailer park incident.
Well, you don't become the owner of the trailer.
Because it's a separate deed.
Yeah, because it tires out property.
But we can sure, we can sure lean the property for cleaning up the trailer, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, at least do that.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
So, didn't someone tell us not long ago that there was a new state law that said that you could go and, and get rid of these abandoned trailers all over the place?
I did hear we were together somewhere and the state was working on a new law that would allow you to be able to get rid of a-
I thought it already passed.
I don't know if it had passed or not, but I do remember, I forgot where we were, but you and I-
Yeah, I just don't remember either.
That discussion.
Okay.
So if you can lean the property owner, then I'm good with that.
We, we done that before. Deedee, is that trailer on the corner of Corrine and Field?
Uh-
Out on the corner.
Not on the corner.
Yeah, but it's a-
But it's first, yes, it's a block. That's right.
Because the corner is empty.
Yes.
Right.
You could see it.
Then there's another building.
Yeah.
It's close to the street.
Right.
It's on the, then there's a house, then there's the trailer in between the two.
Yeah.
You see that house?
Yeah.
The trailer's kinda in between the two?
Right. Well, you, it's where you're, you're thinking it is, that's the same place.
It's several lots.
Sort of do like this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's it.
A tree fell through it.
Yeah.
That's the one.
It looked like the tree off of it, I don't know.
No, no, it's still on there. It's still on there, look.
Look, it's still on it.
Right.
Yeah.
On that side, you don't see it from the other side.
You don't see it from the other side?
Right.
Okay.
But that's why it does.
Right.
Yeah.
Can we have any other discussion? Uh, please vote your machines. Thank you all as always. I'm clerk, seven H.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-three, declaring that the buildings at address eight oh one Francis Street, District Five, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Thank you all. Uh, Jimmy?
Carport's now falling, it's just a mess.
This, this is a-
Lloyd Brown's been after me for that one.
Yeah, so this is the one also that he said we could do it in a governmental agreement and he would help me pay for it.
Right.
So this is on, this is one where I've asked Public Works to go several times to clean up the yard. The house has been empty for probably twenty years. The lady died many, many years ago, it's an adjudicated property, it's just been sitting there, it needs to be torn down. They got all kind of rodents and everything around there.
Okay. Any, any discussion?
That's off of Ann Street, right?
Yeah, it's on, uh, Francis, right when you turn off Adele, make that first right.
On, where Lloyd lives, at the same?
Yeah, same street.
Same street.
Yeah.
I know it's that now.
Yeah.
Behind the Masonic Hall, we're right close to it, like.
Not too far from away, from there, yeah.
Couple blocks.
Yeah. But it, it definitely needs to go, no one's gonna claim it, no one's gonna fix it. Lady didn't have any relatives.
Wow. Any, any discussion or we? Well, then please vote your machines. Almost kind of clear cut. Thank you all. Seven I.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-four, declaring that the buildings at address thirteen fifty-five Julia Street in District Five, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt.
Oh, yeah. That's the one they burn, huh, Jimmy?
Yep.
At the burn house?
Yeah, that's the burn house.
Yeah, and I think you tried to burn, well, they tried to get burned about two or three times.
But in the last two weeks-
I see they cleaned it up some stuff.
They cleaned the inside off.
Yeah.
Someone bought it in February.
There was a recent sale on that house.
So that person is now cleaning it.
I was about to say-
I know because a neighbor called me about it initially and I called Mr. Broussard to let him know. And, um, she updated me recently saying that there's a new owner. I think in February they purchased it and now they're cleaning it up, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. Are they still supposed to come, the new owner?
Yes.
Well, I think they should.
Yes.
They should come.
Yes.
So tell us their plan.
Second meeting, get over here or whatever, I said, those dollars. Please get to the meeting by May whatever on this house. Lot of good neighbors around it.
You gonna name it a new owners?
Yeah.
Just got it.
I can't pronounce it.
Right. So go get the letter though, right?
If I ever hold you, if I ever hold you a piece after the next meeting.
I have a copy of the sale right here.
Okay. Good, so we'll get them here and tell us their plan, maybe we'll have a success story, maybe we'll save one of these houses.
Jimmy, have they applied for, um, a permit?
No.
So, get them over here or whoever, gonna do something, y'all better hear it on this TV. It'll be him.
All right, uh, is there any other discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank you all. Seven J.
Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-five, declaring that the buildings at address eight oh eight Lombard Street, District Two, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by-
Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilman Dustin Swer.
I mean, I know the house, I know the family. No, it's been, it's been a long time coming, I know, I know them all, they, they, it's adjudicated, right?
I think so, I think this one is.
It is, uh, and the, the assessment owner is Rob Lee Landry.
Mm-hmm.
Years ago. But it's care of Swanetta Landry James.
Correct.
Yeah. Care of usually means somebody's dead, that's usually what the assessment. And she's in California.
No, she's here.
Their local family?
They're back home. That was my grandfather's first cousin's house.
Okay.
Mr. Joe Landry and his children, he had so, well, I don't even think, I don't know how many children he had, but he had a few sons, uh, they're in their eighties. They were cutting the grass, keeping it maintained, they got a little old, they just let it go. One of them used to keep it up regularly.
The carport, don't walk under it.
Yeah, that house.
The, the back, the back shed is termite ate of.
Oh, oh, no, I, what? Yeah, I mean, it, it's coming back in May, right?
Yeah.
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 Okay. I'm not trying to save it.
No, I hear you.
Oh, no.
It's all good.
They're looking at you like-
Like, no, I don't know, yeah, no, I, I want, it, it gotta go, it's, that's what y'all wanted me to say.
No, I'm just, I'm just letting you finish.
No, I didn't have too much more to say, it's, that's one of the worst ones.
If you know some of the family, tell them.
Right.
You know, because we need to be fair about it.
Right, yeah, I'll let them know, but.
Yeah. Good. Any other-
All, all of them have to pass by that house three or four times a week.
So it's nothing that they don't recognize?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well.
Because, I mean, people say being fair, but the fact is, is that it's been sitting there for years and you know it's been there, I mean, and we don't give you thirty days, you've had years. Come on now, at, at some point-
I'm with you on that, I'm with you on that.
I mean, I have the same issue with people telling me, well, I was planning on fixing it, well, you've had twenty years, it's still me- messed up. Thirty days more, I'm sorry, I can't give it.
Yeah, and, and we have to always remember, we're being fair to the people that live around it.
Exactly.
Lives are disrupted because of it and are, you know, subjected to it every day. That's where we're, the, the fairness comes in, is that, you know, it's a, it's a double edged sword, but we take these drastic actions because you can't fix a community and you can't fix a neighborhood and revitalize something when you've got that one thing on the block that just brings all the property values down. You know, I mean, that's why we doing this. It's not to be mean, it's not to take anybody's property away, but we gotta think of the people that we represent that do live here and do do the right thing, you know? Anyway, yes, sir?
But a good point, I mean, you, you can sympathize to an extent. Because you know these homes once told a story and you probably drive by and think, and, but over time-
Yeah, somebody's house.
It, it's no longer sympathy if they're not putting any effort in.
Exactly.
You just, you just go ahead and you make the decision, like Freddie said, based on the surrounding of the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's pretty much what it is to it. I don't want to be cold hearted and tell everybody, tear everybody's houses down, that's not the point. But we need to look forward to what's coming up next, you know?
That's right.
And I'm not, I'm not sympathizing, I'm, I'm sympathizing with the community that I grew up in, this is two houses from where I'm at.
Yeah.
I agree with you on that.
Just to see the community go down, a community that had twenty-five, thirty houses on it, now got five or seven houses on the whole street. And because of this, so it ain't even, I don't feel sorry for them, it's just, it's sad and disheartening that the story behind it, behind every one of these houses, the story is, uh, I'm not gonna let nobody have it and this is what it's gonna look like, that's the story. You know, I like to talk about the elephant in the room, that's the story.
Yeah.
You know, brothers and sisters can't get along to the detriment of grandma's house.
Yep.
You know.
There it is.
That's a half a list.
That's a good way to put it.
He described every house we have.
We talk about that, but that, that's what it is. And, and another thing, and I'll say this and I'll tell it to wh- whoever, it's a bad reflection on your family. It's a bad, that's not what we do, we're not Dr. Phil. But it's a bad reflection on your family when you, when you let your family property go down like that. Now, if you don't care, let us know you don't care about, put a for sale sign on it.
Exactly.
If you don't care, let us know, legally they don't care, put a for sale sign in front of it.
They're gonna get to that and then, like, really, you have nothing.
Yeah, you're right.
So you're telling me you don't just care about, not this house, you can move on to the next, all of them. Because I don't want it to be personal. Every, every family, they don't realize you're being mean or whatever to your brothers and sisters, but you're actually telling the community, I don't care about you either.
Exactly.
So, you know, let that message get out there.
Yes.
Yep.
Because I took care of my grandfather's property on purpose.
Yeah.
Yep. Well said.
Agreed.
All right, is there any other? I don't think we can follow that up. I think he wrapped it up. Good, well then, uh, if you don't mind, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, our last one, seven K.
Dr. Phil would have been proud of it.
That's it, Brooks.
Resolution twenty-two sixty-six, declaring that the building at address six thirty Mississippi Street, District Two, is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and setting date for public hearing on May third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Your district again.
I mean, just, you know, protocol has been set.
That's it, that's it. Right, any other discussion?
So are we talking about the building or the mobile home or both?
Mobile, mobile home.
Mobile home, I think.
I bet you painted them the same color.
Looked like they were-
Yeah, they painted them the same color.
They wasn't-
No, oh.
But they're no-
Same name or again, same situation?
None of this.
That's a separate lot with a mobile home on it. All right. Same can of paint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Then, uh, I'd ask you please vote your machines. Thank you all. All right, Councilman's remarks. Councilman Marquardt.
Okay.
Start us off.
I don't know if anyone else has noticed that, uh, the railroad crossings at Center Street in, uh, St. Peter, Jefferson Terrace in St. Peter and Lewis Street at St. Peter are very rough. You go over it no matter what speed and it's really intense, so. I've talked to the state three times now and, uh, come to find out whoever's normally in charge of fixing the railroad tracks, they were sick. So hopefully we will see that get leveled out soon and, uh, that'll be taken care of. Then also, can we talk about the chickens for a, a split second?
Yes, your Councilman's remarks, you talked about it.
Okay. If there is no one claiming ownership for these chickens, to me, that's community property, relocate them. Someone grab them, whoever might want them, mayor, whoever wants them. To me, it's, uh, it's free range, you know, if they're not labeled with like one of those little bands or whatever, how do you know who they belong to? If no one's stepping up saying, oh, those are mine, because if they do say that, guess what, they can get a ticket because they're not doing the right thing. That was just my opinion on the chickens. Since everyone else is very passionate about them.
Chicken rodeo, chicken rodeo.
That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't have any comment other than I got a call about your chickens today. I told them to call you.
Which ones? Ann Street?
On Ann Street.
Okay, yeah. I literally, they flagged me down, I was riding on Ann Street to go and check on something else and so we had this whole big discussion about, and I took more pictures and turned it in again because I just sent them, but, um, they're not legal, I mean, they're sitting on the ground, there's some that's roaming around and they're definitely disturbing all the neighbors, we could barely have a conversation, it was so loud over there.
Didn't we put the ordinance at your place?
No.
Oh, we did?
No one did. But I already looked up the ordinance in my ordinance book, so I read it.
When we saw the pictures, we asked somebody to put, no, did that? Okay. Oh.
It was me, you and Hillary talking about it.
Yeah, we were gonna put the chicken ordinance at your place tonight.
But I read the ordinance. It says it has to be off the ground and they are all on the ground. All cages are on the ground, I went and checked, I double checked. Because I read the ordinance.
I rode by, they're on the ground.
And there's a whole bunch of them roaming around, so.
Good looking chickens, but I saw them.
And I had four neighbors tell me that those roosters are, they're using them to fight. They said they're not fighting right there, but they take them, they go fight them and they bring them back. So we need to, we need to do something about this.
Fred, I, I, I will, I'm gonna try to digress from chickens and talk about our youth summit on May the fourteenth.
All right.
At the Weston Park.
Okay.
May fourteenth, Weston Park, uh, I want to thank the city and Public Works for, not Public Works, uh, Parks and Recreation.